Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell. Yes, you are here. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu.
President.
And Counselor Zachem. And Counselor Siomo. Madam President.
Thank you. So I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise and Counselor Asabi George will introduce our clergy for the day. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing and Counselor Asabi George will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very excited to welcome and introduce Rabbi Toba Spitzer. Rabbi Toba is a reconstructionist rabbi. She is a leader of the Dor Shay Sedic, a congregation committed to seeking justice and repairing the world. I learned about the rabbi from D.B. Reefer on my staff just about this time last year. We would eat apples and honey and bring in a sweet new year or Rosh Hashanah, and D.B. would tell me what she was learning from the rabbi. These values motivated me to invite Rabbi Toba to talk to us today. Early in her career, Rabbi Toba was inspired by the early work or the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Like Dr. King, she chose to pursue a path of social justice and holiness. Rabbi Toba has long been devoted to working toward peace in the Middle East and criminal justice reform. In 2015, she was elected Vice President of the Massachusetts Board of Rabbis, and this Monday, she was on the State House steps speaking and rallying for workers' rights. Today, please welcome her, Rabbi Toba Spitzer. Thank you.
So I really appreciate this honor and this opportunity. It's a very, as you mentioned, a very auspicious time in the Jewish calendar. We're in the Hebrew month of Elul, which is the four weeks leading up to Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. And according to one rabbinic tradition, an early rabbinic tradition, this was the month, the Hebrew month, in which the world was created. And so the world was created in Elul, and according to this tradition, on Rosh Hashanah, on the first day of the month of Tishrei, human beings were created. And Rosh Hashanah commemorates the creation of humans, and it's also called Yom Dein, a Day of Judgment. And there's this notion that this is the day in which the Creator surveys all of creation and sort of does the yearly check-in, like, how's it going? How's my creation doing? And so we sort of stand a bit in trembling on that day because we know we're being looked at and how are we doing? So I wanted to offer a teaching and then a prayer based on the teaching. So a parable about the creation of the world from the early rabbinic tradition. There was a king who had delegate glass cups. He said to himself, if I pour hot water directly into the cups, they will expand and shatter. If I pour cold water directly into them, they will contract and shatter. So what did he do? He mixed hot water with cold water and poured it into them, and they did not break. So the rabbi says it was with God. When it came time to create the world, God reflected, if I create the world only with the attribute of Rachamim, of loving kindness, of compassion alone, there will be an overflow of wrongful acts because there will be no one to hold anyone to justice. But if I create the world solely with the quality of Dein, of strict justice, how would the world endure? Human beings cannot, we just can't stand before complete and strict justice. So God said, I will create it with both a mixture of justice and compassion, and the world will endure. So this, I think, is the charge I feel in myself as a rabbi that I offer to you in your council deliberations. I think the midrash suggests that it's in some ways easy to sit in the place of judgment. It's easy to judge ourselves. It's easy to judge others. It's not always pleasant, but it's somewhat easy to do. But we're really called in this season to look towards compassion along with justice and to find that balance. As Jews, we pray throughout the High Holidays to move God from the seat of justice to the seat of compassion. And I think that's our sort of our own projection. We're actually calling on ourselves to move from the place of strict judgment to the place of compassion. So in this New Year, I think we are seeking that balance within ourselves and in dealing with others. And we come into the New Year with a sense of possibility. This is the prayer I would offer. So Holy One of blessing, bring to the work of these city counselors the capacity for wise judgment, for clarity of thought, and the balance of fairness. Bring to their hearts and all of our hearts a profound capacity for compassion, compassion for themselves, for one another, and for all the people of this city for whom they govern. And as we enter into this new school year, into this new Jewish year, into a new season, bring to all of us here the power of possibility, the possibility of a city where all are fed and well-educated, where all earn a good wage, where the natural environment thrives amidst the built environment, and where it is easier to get here from West Newton in a more timely way. And let us say amen. Again, I want to thank you for having me. The last thing I want to say, I was on the steps of the State House on Monday with the Moral Mondays Movement, and I will leave this with you. It's the Higher Ground Moral Declaration. I wanted to give it to you all. If you haven't seen it, it's a wonderful call, I think, to all of us who are public servants in different ways to bring a sense of justice and love to our country. So.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Rabbi Spitzer. So now on to our formal business. Oh, Madam Clerk, would you please mark Counselor Campbell as present? Okay, great. So we'll start with approval of the minutes from last meeting. If there are any objections or changes, please make them known. Seeing and hearing none, the minutes shall stand approved. And on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1187, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY17 State 911 Department PSAP and Regional Emergency Communication Center Support and Incentive Grant Program funds in the amount of $3,253,317 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, the State's 911 Department.
Docket number 1187 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1188, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY17 State 911 Department Training Grant Funds in the amount of $735,334 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities, State 911 Department.
Docket 1188 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1189, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $447,390 from the U.S. Department of Justice of the Justice Assistance Funds from the FY2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, known as JAG, for the Boston Police Department for the purpose of supporting crime prevention and law enforcement.
Docket 1189 will also be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1190, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $30,000 from Demand Abolition/Hunt Alternative Foundation. The grant was awarded for the purpose of providing support to the Boston Police Department's Human Trafficking Unit and Office of Research and Development so that they may coordinate for the City of Boston Cease-Boston Demand Reduction Campaign.
Docket 1190 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1191, message and order authorizing the Boston Fair Housing Commission to accept and expend $22,500 for the FY17 U.S. Department of Housing Development, known as HUD, Fair Housing Assistance Program Grant awarded to the Boston Fair Housing Commission to enhance the FY17 education and outreach efforts under the Fair Housing Assistance Partnership Agreement.
Fair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to suspend and pass docket number 1191 to get this grant into the hands of the Fair Housing Commission as soon as possible so they can continue their outreach efforts and making sure that folks across the city are aware of resources here on this field. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Anyone else wish to speak on this? At this time, Counselor Zachem moves for a suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1191. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1191 has been passed.
Docket number 1192, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jane Cooper Brayton as a member of the Zoni Commission for a term ending May 1, 2019.
Docket 1192 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 1193, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Quack Ron to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for a term expiring April 1, 2020.
Docket 1193 will also be assigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
And docket number 1194, message and order for your approval of the discontinuance of by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, known as MassDOT, of a portion of a state highway for the purpose of allowing the City of Boston to perform construction on the North Washington Street Bridge.
Docket 1194 will be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Reports of public officers and others.
If you would like, that could be 1195 through 1202.
Thank you very much.
Docket number 1195, notices received from the Mayor of the appointment of Aziki, I'm sorry, Ezobiki Azidi Jr., he'll never forgive me, as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring on July 1, 2017. Docket number 1196, notices received from the Mayor of the absence from the city from 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 27, 2016, until 9:30 a.m. on Tuesday, August 30, 2016. Docket number 1197, notices received from the Mayor of the absence from the city from 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 30, 2016, until 9:00 p.m. on Sunday, September 4, 2016. Docket number 1198, notices received from the Mayor of the absence from the city from 1:00 p.m. on Monday, September 5, 2016, until 9:00 p.m. on Wednesday, September 7, 2016. Docket number 1199, the Constable Bonds for Paul Bartlett and Nicholas Zafarikas have been duly approved by the Collective Treasurer were received. Docket number 1200, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the report and decision on the application of the Orion Heights Redevelopment Phase 1, Chapter 121A Project. Docket number 1201, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Medical Area Total Energy Plant, Chapter 121A Project, Certificate of Project Termination. And docket number 1202, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the One Summer Street, Chapter 121A Project Certificate of Project Termination.
Docket's number 1195 through 1202 will be placed on file. Okay, apologies. We will need to, Chair moves for reconsideration of docket number 1199, which slipped by in the list of items for file, but we do need to vote to approve these constable bonds under the usual terms and conditions as we do each other bond that we receive. So any objection to reconsideration? This time Chair moves for, to approve docket 1199, the Constable Bonds of Paul Bartlett and Nicholas Zafarikas under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1199 has been passed, approved under the usual terms and conditions. Uh, yes, and then back to 1203, please.
Docket number 1203, communication was received from President Wu of the request for bids and hiring of Ellen Fritsch and Associates to provide stenographic services for fiscal year 2017.
So I just wanted to take a minute to update everyone that we had a public meeting on the bids we received for the stenography contract. This is the largest contract in the council's budget, and it's for a one-year term. We received, we did everything in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B, in the public procurement process, put out the request for bids, received two bids, one from Ellen Fritsch and Company and one from California Deposition Reporters. And notwithstanding Ellen's experience with the council and great work to date, it was very clear just from looking at the other bid that it was not completed in that they did not offer pricing for indexing, which is an important part of the stenography contract, as well as the pricing components. So whereas the Ellen Fritsch and Company bid was for an all-inclusive price, very predictable for the council budget, the other company's bid was based on an hourly rate and other factors that we wouldn't be able to precisely measure, as well as putting a premium on rush processing. And we do need to turn around our minutes in indexing within a certain 48-hour window due to the legal requirements, so we would be charged that rush premium every single time under that contract. So under the authority of the Council President's Office and Chair of the Rules and Administration Committee, we will be moving forward with Ellen's contract. I wanted just to inform you all of that and also give us the opportunity to publicly thank Ellen for the great work that she does every council meeting and that she has done for many years. Thank you. Great. Any questions on the stenography contract or other contracts? Great, all right. Moving on to reports of committees, Madam Clerk. Oh, thank you. Docket number 1203 will be placed on file. And now reports of committees.
Docket number 0992, the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation, who which was referred on July 13, 2016, docket number 0992, message and order authorizing the City of Boston's Transportation Department to enter into a contract for a period of up to 10 years for the services of an operator for a city's bike share program, known as Hubway. The contract terms would begin in 2017. The council's permission to enter into a contract of this type for a period of more than three years is required by Section 12 of Chapter 30B of the General Laws to miss a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Fair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation, Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a hearing on Thursday, August 18, regards to docket number 0992. So at the hearing was Ms. Stephanie Seskey, who's the active Transportation Director of the City of Boston Transportation Department. So what they're looking to do is to extend their contractor, contract to 10 years, and to do that, to make that happen under Session 12, Chapter 30B, the General Laws, the council has a vote to approve the extension. They feel that they could get more sponsorships if we could extend the contract from three, five, 10. As you know, this has been a very, Hubway's been very successful, the program has 14,000 members, and on this past April, 1 million took advantage, took a ride. The number of stations have doubled since 2011, and Hubway's looking to expand in Council O'Malley's district and my district. And so it's all good, and I just ask that we vote to support this.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina.
It's all good.
All good. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. It is indeed all good. I appreciate the Chairman. I participated in the hearing. Just for a little edification, which I didn't know before the hearing, is that we had a three-year process where the council would constantly have to accept and vote on contracts. This will allow for better sponsorship over a longer period of time. Obviously, that means more revenue can be generated for the program, which means we can have further expansion. I raised a concern in the hearing that while I was delighted that Hubway would be expanding to Roselandale, West Roxbury wasn't yet in the 10-year plan, and I expressed my displeasure. Subsequently, had conversations with Stephanie and with her team, with the administration, and was assured that West Roxbury will be in the queue. It may be a while, but we will certainly make sure that Hubway comes to West Roxbury. So with that information, I will be proudly supporting this matter. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor Lamatina moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0992. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0992 has been passed. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1112, order for hearing to review ways for the city to support carnival and Caribbean community cultural events.
Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Would you like to comment on the working session?
Sure. So we had a very productive conversation yesterday with folks from the Caribbean community, from committees, ban leaders, to talk about how the City of Boston can further support not just carnival but other cultural events for that particular community. I want to thank my co-sponsors, Counselor Wu and Counselor Presley. Counselor Asabi George attended, as well as staff from several offices. So we envisioned having a, oh, and Counselor Jackson, I apologize. Counselor Jackson was also there along with his Chief of Staff. We envisioned having a follow-up meeting where the Tourism and Special Events Department shows up. Yesterday, we had Chief Burrows, the Arts and Cultural Department, talk about the cultural plan, talk about new grants that are available for folks to apply for. It was a productive conversation. Look forward to having more and encourage other counselors to also participate. Obviously, although my district has a large Caribbean population, this is important for the entire City of Boston. It generates revenue for the entire City of Boston and truly reflects a big and large community in the City of Boston. So I encourage other counselors to come at the next one, to be scheduled for the future. Thank you, President Wu, and thank you, Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Would the other co-sponsor like to comment on anything? Okay, great. Docket 1112 will remain in the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events.
Docket number 1051, order for hearing regarding the North End Nursing Home.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very robust hearing here last night from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Folks from the North End came over and articulated very clearly that they want a nursing home to remain in their neighborhood. Quickly, after I say a few things, I'll turn it over to the lead sponsor. This is something that's facing really all our communities because this is about the elderly and the disabled and the infirmed being able to stay in their neighborhood. And it was clear to me that we need to do everything we can to support this going forward. Obviously, Spalding Rehab Network has no interest in continuing to operate that facility at that location. And so as a city, we need to look at this as an example of how we would move forward. After Counselor Lamatina speaks and others, if they so choose, I would want this to remain in committee because I think there may be more hearings that would be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Linehan, for hosting the meeting. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Anissa Asabi George, and Counselor Jackson for attending. And I know I got some notes of those who could not attend. This is very emotional for the folks in the North End. When you live in the North End, there's a nursing home in your neighborhood, you can walk to that neighborhood and visit it. And there's only one nursing home in our downtown neighborhood, or South Town, North End, Beacon Hill, Back Bay. So it's very important that we support the North End. I am very proud of a vote that this council took, and that vote was when we supported the extension of urban renewal. And when we voted for the urban renewal, one piece that I voted for to support it was the LDA, Land Disposition Agreement. In that particular property, property in the North End, there's an LDA attached that says that it has to be nursed. So with that, we had Brian Golden from the BRA here, who said that there is an LDA, has to be a nursing home, and the BRA has no plan to expire that use. So I'm very happy about that, and we should all be proud with our vote that we took on the urban renewal because it's protection for a lot of these neighborhoods. Because there's so many of these LDAs, and the BRA really needs to get their act together in regards to listen to them where they are in our neighborhoods so we know where they are. I had no idea there was an LDA on this property until I found out that Spalding wanted to close a nursing home. I just would hope that you will help me and the folks in the North End to fight to keep that nursing home open. You had a loved one, and I know Bill Linehan, Counselor Linehan talked about last night when his mother was in nursing home, and his family who lived in South Boston were able to visit the mother every single day. So that's very important to families. So I appreciate Counselor Linehan keeping this committee on because at least if it's not a committee, if we need to have another hearing, it's Aaron. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Docket 1051 will remain in the Committee on Planning and Development. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1204, counselors O'Malley and Presley offer the following order for hearing on implementing a curbside composting program in Boston.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. A pessimist may say, three strikes, you're out. An optimist says, third time's the charm. Ladies and gentlemen, I am very much an optimist, and that is why today, for the third time, I'm refiling with my good colleague and friend, Counselor Ayanna Presley, a hearing order to discuss curbside composting in the City of Boston. This is done to tremendous success throughout the United States. As a brief background, composting is a way to treat organic material in the presence of oxygen. When organic matter is brought to a landfill, it breaks down without oxygen, causing it to release methane gas, a powerful gas that is very harmful to our environment, which also takes up space in our growing landfills. When the composting process is completed, you get a finished product of nutrient-rich soil that can be sold and used. This fertilizer is more environmentally friendly than synthetic ones. It reduces or eliminates the need for chemical pesticides, which have been linked to a wide range of human health hazards and can better serve the community. There are 100-plus municipalities nationwide that have curbside composting, including Portland, Oregon, Seattle, Washington, San Francisco, as well as Austin, Texas. In San Francisco, their composted mulch is used for the parks and beautiful park system in the City of San Francisco. So not only is it good for the taxpayer, but it's good for the environment as well. San Francisco diverts more than 60% of its waste from landfills through composting and recycling. In the first year of curbside composting, Portland, Oregon decreased its trash production by 37%. In 2014, the City of Cambridge began a one-year curbside composting pilot program, which has collected 170,000 pounds of food scraps for more than 600 households. This was just in one very small neighborhood across the river in Cambridge. Now, this is something that is particularly relevant as yesterday, Council President Wu and I had our first of three public meetings on talking about ways to address plastic bags. And one of the issues that has been, or one of the models that has been done to great success is allowed for compostable plastic bags, which are thicker, more durable, and can be composted. That obviously will only work if there is indeed composting available. That obviously will only work if there is indeed composting available in the city. We have Project Oscar, which has done to great success. I think there's one in East Boston, the North End, there's one in Jamaica Plain now, there may be several other neighborhoods, forgive me, but it's overflowing. People are using it, people recognize it. We have several farmers' market that accept it. There's been talk, and I think this is a great first step, of making sure that every farmer's market can accept composting. Again, this is good for the environment and it is good for the taxpayer because we are paying more and more for our, the tonnage of trash to get picked up. We're getting paid less and less, we're actually paying in some cases recycling now, which is a whole sea change from five, 10 years ago. So there's more that we need to be doing. Once again, this is an example where cities and towns across the country are stepping up, doing the right thing. I think this is such an exciting opportunity for the city of Boston. So we've done this before, Council Presley's been a great ally in this fight. Council Arroyo and I introduced this originally probably four or five years ago now. Now is the time to make it happen. Good for the environment, good for the city of Boston, good for the taxpayer of Boston. What can be better than that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Delighted to continue our partnership in this space. And I'll just say, since everything has already been eloquently said by the lead sponsor of the order, that, you know, we have managed to successfully expand our community gardens, our farmers' markets. And whenever I'm in these meeting places, this is at the top of conversation. People want to know, "When will we as a city have curbside composting?" In the same way that we have Vision Zero in our aim to get to zero when it comes to collisions and fatalities with our motor vehicles and our cyclists, I'm hoping that we can get as a city to a place of zero waste. So look forward to the hearing and continuing to bang the drum on this.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Baker, you have the floor.
I would just like to sign on.
Madam Clerk, please add Council Baker's name, please add Council Campbell, Council Siomo, Council Asabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Jackson. Did I note that Council Jackson was present? That is my fault. Council Jackson has been present for a while and Council McCarthy as well. Please add Council La Matina, Council Linehan, Council McCarthy, Council Zachem. Please add the Chair. Docket number 1204 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Sustainability.
Docket number 1205, Council Baker offer the following order for hearing to discuss House Bill 4565, an Act Modernizing Municipal Finance and Government as it relates to speed limits in the city of Boston.
Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On April 27th of this year, we as a board unanimously voted to approve docket 0481, an act concerning speed limits in the city of Boston, lowering the speed limit in thickly settled areas in the city. This in turn was approved by Mayor Wal shortly thereafter. As many of you know, with help from our colleagues in the state legislature, we were able to include language in House Bill 4565, an Act Modernizing Municipal Finance and Government, allowing Boston to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit, as well as create safety zones with a posted speed of 20 miles per hour, which was ultimately authorized and passed by Governor Baker. No relation. The speed limit, not yet anyway. The speed limit language in this bill will take effect 90 days after it is passed, during which the city of Boston will have the opportunity to adopt these measures to lower the speed limit. So we'll take it to a vote and this is a way for us to get it, get it there, tee-dep to take the vote. The city council should hold a hearing to discuss the eventual adoption of the speed limit language in House Bill 4565 and discuss its implementation across the city. Following this hearing, we'll continue our steps forward to ensure that we make Boston a much safer place, not just for motorists, but for pedestrians and bicyclists alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to first thank Council Baker for his efforts on this front, the home rule petition, as well as this hearing order. I would like to add my name and just say, wholeheartedly, I look forward to working on this and moving as quickly as we can. I think it's high time the legislature gave the city of Boston the authority to do more with our speed limits and making our streets safer for everyone, as Council Presley just mentioned, the Vision Zero initiative that we've all been working on with the mayor and his team these past few years. There are quite a few areas in District 8 that would benefit greatly from being designated as safety zones. And this is a regular issue I hear about from constituents in the downtown neighborhoods. We've had a series of really unfortunate fatalities in the Back Bay in particular, around Mass Ave, on Beacon Street. And having this in the toolbox as a way to lower speed limits, which while people may not end up going 20 miles per hour, hopefully they'll take it down from 40. And it gives our police department more tools to enforce this and to make us all safer. So again, I would like to sign on, I look forward to the hearing and working with my colleagues and the mayor to create the safety zones where appropriate, but also to make sure that our city, our streets across the city of Boston are safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zachem. Madam Clerk, please add Council Zachem's name, please add Council Campbell, Council Siomo, Council Asabi George, Council Flaherty, Council Jackson, Council La Matina, Council McCarthy, Council O'Malley, Council Presley. Please add the Chair. Okay, and now there are a couple more colleagues who would like to speak. Council O'Malley, would you like to say anything additional? Okay. Let's see, Council Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to congratulate Council Baker and to commend him on his efforts in this. For my 10 years on the city council, this is something that we've been trying to put forward for a very, very long time. And that we have this in this place at this time is a kudos to him and to everybody before him who did a lot of work. So add my name and looking forward to ironing this thing up.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Madam Clerk, please add Council Linehan. Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also rise to thank Council Baker, congratulate him and his Uncle Charlie for passing this ordinance. It's very important. And you know, I was talking to a friend of mine from Milton, he was talking about insurance rates. And with wayfinding apps such as Waze, more people are cutting through our side streets. And they're cutting through side streets that they're not familiar with. So a lot more of the accidents I know in District 5 are from people from Canton and Dedham and Westwood and Norwood, cutting through High Park, Rosendale, and Mattapan to get to where they want to go. They're driving too fast down streets they're unfamiliar with, and this is why this is so important at this time. So again, congratulations on that.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Docket number 1205 will be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1206, Council Presley offers the following order for hearing to discuss strategies for ensuring equity in marijuana licensing.
Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 8th, voters in Massachusetts will vote to elect their representatives on the state and federal level, and they'll also answer for ballot questions. One of those ballot questions, question four, asks if we should legalize and regulate marijuana the same way we do alcohol. Now, I am personally conflicted about what I will do when I go to the polls on November 8th, but that's really irrelevant. As a policymaker, it is my job to support the will of the electorate, to ensure that laws are successfully implemented once passed. Now, I'm not in the business of predicting elections. However, a recent poll released by WBUR indicates that a majority of voters are leaning towards the legalization of marijuana. I'm offering this hearing order to proactively begin a conversation in the event that question four does pass, to ensure the distribution of licenses to establishments selling recreational marijuana is equitable and fair, and focused on righting the injustices of the past. Thanks to many activists, organizers, thought leaders, and movements like Black Lives Matter and our presidential election, we are finally addressing culturally and socially, as well as through policy reforms, the consequences of the war on drugs and the disproportionate impact on people of color and low-income residents. Righting these wrongs can happen through collective will and intentional legislation, and we have other cities and states to look to as model. Cities like Oakland, California have passed ordinances, and states like Maryland and New York are grappling with the same question. Now here in Massachusetts, unlike California where there is a shared jurisdiction between cities and states, the Commonwealth will have full regulatory authority over recreational marijuana, as they currently do for medical marijuana. Now, you know, really just from an enterprising standpoint, I just want to say that if we are not thoughtful and intentional and proactive about this, it is my concern from an enterprising standpoint that the usual players and profile of entrepreneurs, which is for so long excluded, low-income and people of color and women, will be who are best positioned, if this does pass, for these establishments, licenses for these establishments. Boston has so often been a leader, this chamber has led on so many issues related to equity and so many other critical issues, ultimately resulting in state and policy change. I think there is a real opportunity for us to do the same thing here. It is my intention, working closely with the Chair of whatever committee this order is reported to, to convene a hearing prior to the November 8th election. There are many experts from throughout the country I have invited to share their recommendations and best practices. I'm excited to partner with them and local leaders in this space to develop a model system. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Council Presley, again, a very thoughtful approach. I am for the legalization of recreational marijuana in the state of Massachusetts. I think it is, as a state, and we talk about this all the time here, actually so is South, but we talk about this all the time, that, and actually, I'm not even, I don't know where Council Linehan stands, but he speaks about, and we are not drug-tested in our jobs, so we don't know. But in all honesty, in all honesty, this is really important because disproportionately, men of color and poor people have been locked up on this issue. Interestingly, the state of Massachusetts, in the ballot question, you can actually have a drug conviction and work in this space, which is a really forward-thinking and groundbreaking approach. And so I think it is really critical that the people who've been hurt the most have an opportunity to be at the table to benefit. One of the reasons why I was against having a dispensary right down the street from the Suffolk County Jail is there are people in that jail that are serving two and a half years for what these folks are actually going to make millions of dollars doing. We want to ensure that there's equity of opportunity, and these are what we would refer to as transferable skills when it comes to the opportunity to work in these dispensaries. But I think it is critical that we get ahead of it. And Boston is the largest city in the state of Massachusetts, and we want to ensure that we have the most inclusion and the most modeled program. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Council Jackson's name. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I like Counselor Presley, I'm not quite decided. I think I'm against, I'm leaning towards being against recreational marijuana, but I do believe there is a value in the medical marijuana, so that's where I am on that. But this is, this is good work here. I think we need to make sure the discussion comes through this hall here because they're going to be in our neighborhoods, and if they, and if they come and it's all just made legal, we run the risk of just them flooding into our neighborhoods. So equity, but also equity in neighborhoods and figuring out where they should be, where they should be going. So thank you, Council Presley, for this, and sign on.
Thank you, Council Baker. Madam Clerk, please add Council Baker's name, please add Council Campbell, Council Siomo. Docket number 1206 will be assigned to the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1207, Council Wu for Council Linehan, offer the following order.
Council Linehan moves for suspension and passage of docket 1207. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1207 has been passed.
Docket number 1208, Council Wu, offer the following order for the appointment.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 1208. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1208 has been passed.
Docket number 1209, Council Wu for Council McCarthy, offer the following order.
Council McCarthy moves for suspension and passage of docket 1209. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1209 has been passed. There are no late filed matters in the hands of the clerk. Great job. We have, we do have five matters added to the consent agenda, which will be added in the absence of objection, hearing none, the matters are still added, and the chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The consent agenda is adopted. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? No takers? Okay. So before we adjourn, I just want to make two announcements. One, just a quick update on some of what my office has been working on, thinking about council-wide issues. I will be sending some emails with more details, but just so you all are updated, five major projects, one around the council chamber and accessibility issues. So that has, that, we've had several meetings with colleagues and with the facilities management department. We are waiting, awaiting the final study with finalized costs and all those numbers. And at that point, we would have a conversation about funding and timing and what we actually want to see. So that is proceeding, keep an eye out for further meetings. Secondly, on the website relaunch and the council's website, we'll be adding more documents so that each calendar item will be able to have attached any meeting minutes, notices, presentations. So if you have other ideas on what we need to make sure to work into that, please let me know. And then three items related to central staff. First, on events management, particularly off-site hearings and nighttime hearings. We've been having a little bit of, we need a little more standardization of who's in charge of what between council offices and central staff as we're doing more and more meetings out in the neighborhoods, streaming them, videotaping them, a lot of coordination, facilities in advance. So I'm going to be emailing a proposed set of guidelines from central staff for your feedback, and we will look to finalize those. And then finally, around central staff and salaries, cost of living increases, as well as performance evaluations. We have too long not really paid attention in-house to making sure that our staff are awarded the same consideration when it comes to cost of living increases as city employees are across the board. So want to have that conversation in conjunction with one on performance evaluations and really putting a little bit more metrics behind defining what performance is about with central staff. But that part, really need all of your feedback in terms of what does your office seek from central staff, what's the best type of support? So again, just a heads up, but those are the five areas we've been working on. And secondly, tomorrow is August Moon Festival, so happy August Moon, please enjoy some mooncake, and wanted to remind you all that that is happening. More festivities in Chinatown. That's all from me. I have a light flashing from Council McCarthy.
Yeah. Unanimous consent to make a statement.
You have it?
Yeah, I knew it. I just want, everybody, I'm running a golf tournament for Last Call Foundation on Monday. It's at George Wright, 8:00. Everybody will be registering sometime after 7:00. If you can help out, if you have something to donate, if you have any thoughts or anything, if you want to put in a team, that would be awesome. It's going to be a really good time. All the money is going to go directly to Last Call Foundation. Even if you are just in town and you want to take a long ride out to District 5, the George Wright Golf Course is in immaculate shape, the clubhouse has just been redone. We have a big, beautiful patio out there now, it's going to be a beautiful day. And we'd love to just have you, even just to say hi to everybody and thank them for their support. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council McCarthy and Council Baker.
Unanimous consent to make a statement. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for coming to my, for my mother's funeral. It was, it was a great tribute to her. She was a great woman in my eyes, tough life, tough early life, but she, she had a good life, again, not, never really rich or anything like that, but rich in love, rich in family, rich in all the things that really matter, that matter in the next life, I believe. So thank you, everyone, again. And Ron, you look great in your number ones again also. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. All right, at this time, if all colleagues and guests would please rise. And we will adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Siomo, Patricia Kennedy, Pompeo Salvucci, Francis Sullivan. For Council Flaherty, William F. Ahern Jr., Patricia Daley, Martin Glynn. For Council La Matina, Theodore V. Anzalone, Grace A. Ciani, Marie Jeanette Farino, Deborah Pallini, Robert Principi, Principape, excuse me, and Marie Sorrentino. For Council Linehan, Kevin Lynch, Joseph McGrath. For Councilors Flaherty and Linehan, Lori Miller. For Council McCarthy, John Kelly. For Councilors Flaherty, Linehan, and Asabi George, Joseph Dodo Knee Jr. For Councilors McCarthy and O'Malley, Elizabeth A. Ross. For Council McCarthy and the Chair, Brian Fapiano. For Council McCarthy and the Chair, Brian Fapiano. For the Chair, John Demos, Alex's godfather, and Panos D. Spiliakos. And for all councilors, Paul F. McDevitt, the husband of our state auditor Suzanne Bump. A moment of silence, please. Chair moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and we are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, September 21st, 2016, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed say nay. Eyes have it, council is adjourned.